Things in, do we? A little.
Call to order, Prescott Valley Council Meeting, February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Tonight's invocation will be done by Pastor David Knight, Bethel Baptist Church. Welcome, David.
Father, thank you for the reading. And thank you for Valentine's Day. A day that reminds us mostly of romantic love, but, Father, it also reminds us of our need to love our neighbor as himself. And I pray that this gathering today with the council would have foremost on our hearts and minds, loving the neighbor as theirself. We know of the numbers, budgets, reports, testimonies, all that's going on. Let underlining everything be, we want to love one another, and we want to love our neighbors as ourself. Bless this time for that, in Jesus' name.
David, would you like to...David, you'd like to start us off in the pledge tonight?
Oh, sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'll sing the national anthem.
Town clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palguda.
President.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Here.
And Councilmember Packard.
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Let's start off with number five, proclamation, "Stand With Me, Be Drug Free." I don't believe we have anyone here accepting it.
Somebody from the police department, if you want.
I saw two officers.
I'm sorry, someone from the police department will be coming down?
I may share with them.
Clerk, will you please read the proclamation?
Absolutely. Stand By Me Be Drug Free Week, February 25th through March 2nd, 2019. Whereas Matt Forrest has designated February 25th through the March 2nd as Stand With Me Be Drug Free Week, and whereas the town of Prescott Valley embraces a vision of a healthy, vibrant, and strong community for children, youth, families, and people of all ages, and celebrates the fact that a majority of people do not abuse drugs and alcohol, and whereas the town of Prescott Valley recognizes the youth drug prevention is essential based on the fact that nine of 10 people who struggle with substance use disorders began using substances as a teenager, and whereas knowing that families are adversely affected by illegal drug use, including work problems, legal struggles, mental health challenges, physical illness, addiction, accidents, accidental death, economic loss, child abuse, destruction of families, driving while impaired, and crimes against persons and property. Whereas the town of Prescott Valley would like to commend and pay tribute to all of its citizens who choose to be free of illegal drug use, now therefore, I call Palguda, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, to hereby proclaim February 25th through March 2nd as Stand By Me Be Drug Free Week, and encourage all of our citizens to participate in the celebration of a drug-free, healthy community by participating in the planned events, activities, and displays.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe the vice mayor's gonna say a few words.
Before we let the chief speak, I want to share with you that I've been a member of Matt Forrest, and they were the driving force behind this. I happen to be on the committee, and it's very immodest of me to say this, but I was annoyed that we weren't celebrating people who were drug-free. And so I spoke to the group, and I had a lot of support, which I rounded up before the meeting, and we realized how important it is to celebrate people that either they had a problem in the past and now they're able to be drug-free, or have never used drugs. Because, as the chief knows, it's the only percentage of the community that is suffering under this horrible, horrible thing. So it's very important for our community to stand up and do exactly what it says. Stand with me, be drug-free.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. So, as your chief of police, I will say I support any proclamation that celebrates those who are drug-free, and I agree that we should all stand with them. And for those that don't want to be drug-free, I can tell you that your police department works very, very diligently with all partners in all areas to make sure that those who do use drugs are taken off of our streets and that the drugs are kept out of our community.
We have an award from GFOA.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd ask Katie and her team to come on up front.
Great.
The GFOA is an acronym for Government Finance Officers Association, and I am very proud to say that the very hard work of these individuals in preparation of our annual budget, as well as the CAFER, has gone ahead and risen to the level of recognition by GFOA. And I believe that the first one of these awards we got dates back to 2004, and we have had the annual recognition from GFOA on the outstanding work of these individuals right here.
This is our plaque that we have from GFOA. We've added our current year on there. It was a big project, it always is every year. We could not do it without this team of ladies. Right here, we have Lisa Simrak, our accountant, Irina Urmakov, our finance manager, and Latoya Muse, our administrative supervisor. And they work so diligently to make sure that this is a polished document that we can use throughout the entire year, and we're very proud of what we submit to the GFOA, in addition to the one that we use internally, because we actually create two of these budget documents, a more condensed version for GFOA and a more itemized one for Town Use. And in addition to these ladies, even though he has left, Bill Copie was instrumental in putting this book together as well, so thank him for that. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, ladies. All right, number seven will be a certificate of appreciation to Brad Penner for five years of service. Chief, coming on back down.
I love it up here. Officer Penner makes his way down here tonight. We're here to celebrate Brad Penner and his five years with the police department. But I gotta tell you, Officer Penner had a very interesting journey to arrive here tonight for his five-year award. He began his law enforcement career with the Tempe Police Department in 1984. He then moved from the Phoenix area and became a reserve police officer with the Department of Public Safety in the Prescott area before joining the Prescott Valley Police Department in 1994. Brad worked for us through 1998, when he left to pursue other interests. Primarily, he went into business as a certified public accountant specializing in tax-deferred real estate transactions. He then rejoined the Prescott Valley Police Department as a reserve officer about six years ago, and then went full-time in April of 2014. Officer Penner is currently assigned to the traffic unit, where he has been the lead investigator on three fatal crashes, and recently attended the distracted driving summit. At the summit, he took part manning a booth for distracted driving and providing education to people on the new hands-free ordinance Prescott Valley and Yavapai County have implemented. He has been given the nickname of "The Legend" by his fellow officers, and according to all who have worked with him, it is a well-earned nickname. Brad takes pride in his work and insists on making personal contact and follow-up with all the cases that he's been assigned. In his five years with the department, he has earned Officer of the Year twice, the only Prescott Valley officer to ever have accomplished that feat. Among his other duties, he is also the lead crisis negotiator for our SWAT team. Brad is someone who the officers trust and seek out for guidance, not only with work-related situations, but for personal and spiritual guidance as well. So Brad, congratulations on a long time to getting here, the five years.
I'd just say a few words. The nickname "Legend," it precedes you. When I started in 1998 and I was on field training, I would always hear about Brad Penner, Brad Penner this, Brad Penner that, and truly, at one point, I was like, who is this man? Because he truly sounds like a legend, and people back then would refer to you as a legend. So that the new guys and the new officers still recognize that is impressive. So good for you, sir. Also, a little bit, a little something else for you as an appreciation for five years. So again, thank you, sir.
I believe the effusive nature of that description is well beyond the truth. I have, I cannot explain how I really appreciate being here. The men and women I work with are beyond description, and it's very edifying for me. So I will leave it at that, but do not believe everything you hear.
Hang on, sir, you're not quite done. Ma'am, would you like to start?
I just wanted to say thank you for being a legend, because everybody needs a mentor, and it's nice to have somebody set the bar so high, so thank you for all you do.
I suspect that I'm one of the few people up here who've actually seen you in action and been part of one of your investigations, so I want to tell you that during that time, I've never seen anyone conduct themselves as efficiently as you did that day, and it certainly made one of the most unpleasant days of my life be a little more pleasant. So I appreciate your demeanor and your professionalism that day. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you so much for your service, for your past service, and hoping that you'll continue on here for many years to come, and if I do not remember your actual name, I know I will call you "The Legend," so I'm good to go there.
Yeah, when I saw that we were giving a five-year pin to Brad Penner, I go, wait, he's been around a lot longer than that, you know? So that was my first reaction. You know, I remember back when I was the president of the Police Foundation, and you were active then, and we had many occasions to see you at different events. So congratulations on your five years, as long as it took you to get, yeah, you know, it's like an overnight sensation that took 25 years to get there. So thank you for your service, and I know your continued service, and it's great to have a nickname like "The Legend," and that the officers actually do look up to you the way they do. I think it says a lot for our police officers that they recognize it and the fact that you are the person to go to. So thank you.
I believe I've seen you at an accident or two scenes, and I think you had a broom. You were cleaning up the glass, and was that you? I'm sure it was. So you do everything out there, correct? Well, thank you very much for doing everything, and congratulations.
Our officer is a man of many parts. You just heard one. He may be a legend, but he's a very humble legend. Does that make it a little more powerful to you? Just enjoy it, and we'll stop tormenting you right now.
If we'd like to start with...
I would like to acknowledge our employees who have already left. We had the employee Kayla on last Saturday, and that planning team just absolutely pulled out the best of everything. And all of us that were there, we want to thank our employees. We up here are a small contributor compared to the employees of Prescott Valley.
I got something.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I have two things to announce. First off, first one is, I am on the organizing committee for the Humboldt Education Foundation, and this year, we have a yearly event called Teacher of the Year. We are, so save the date for that. It's gonna take place at the Prescott Resort on March 26th at 6 o'clock. It's a Saturday night. If anybody would like to be a sponsor, sponsorship starts at $100, and they go up to $2,500. And we're also looking for people to purchase tickets. Tickets are $35 each. And what else? Anyway, if you need tickets or you wish to be a sponsor, please contact me at mgrossmanpvaz.net, or you could call us, Leah, and she'll connect you to me, 759-3100. And then I also want to put out there, I'm also involved with an event called Hope Still Floats. It's a fundraiser for the Yavapai Family Advocacy Center. The Yavapai Family Advocacy Center, we usually call YFAC. It's the only place in Yavapai County that they could do a rape kit. They also do interviews on sexual assaults and other similar events. They also, if someone has to be picked up in the middle of the night, they leave the house, and they literally have the clothing on their back. They will find them housing, they have a safe house, and they will provide everything that's needed, toilet cheese, clothes, bedding, everything. So that event is gonna be August 17th, 2019, and I will be giving you more information on that as we get closer. But in the meantime, again, we're taking sponsorships for that, and we're taking items for, if you have a business and you want to donate something for our silent auction and live auction, we'll take that. Again, contact me anytime. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number nine, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action. Item A, approving the January 17th, 2019 work-study minutes and January 24th, council and executive minutes. Item B, approving an amendment to the Granicus Service Agreement. Item C, approving a special event liquor license for Basis Prescott Boosters Incorporated on April 6th, 2019 at the event spot located at 6520 East First Street, Prescott Valley. Item D, accounts payable. And item E, sales tax report. Does the council wish to remove any items?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda by electronic vote.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
It's not coming up on mine.
It's not coming up on mine, ma'am.
Okay. How do you wish to vote?
Agreed. Yes.
Councilmember Grossman, how do you wish to vote?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Number 10, old business for action, second reading of ordinance number 856, Viewpoint 89 LLC. Clerk, would you please read the ordinance for a second reading?
Ordinance number 856, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, Municipal Corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map by changing the zoning classification of approximately four acres from RCU-70 zoning residential conditional use permit to R1L-10 PAD zoning residential single-family limited planned area development located in Section 35 Township 15 North, Range 1 West, Heald and Salt River Midradian, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall it pass? And please set the vote. Thanks, ma'am. Number 11, new business for review, comment, and/or possible action. Item A is consideration of reading ordinance number 859 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage amending town code 2-02-04G to specifically add to the mayor's emergency powers, the ability to open up evacuation routes during declared emergencies. Who do we have speaking for that? I believe probably Mr. Parker. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor and council, the item that you've got before you this evening is to go ahead and further specify the emergency powers that are created when there is an emergency declared by the mayor. And this will specifically call out some of the actions that could be employed to evacuate people in the event of an emergency, and that would be whether it's fire, flooding, you know, whatever it might be. And to that end, there was an effort that was started essentially based on comments made by our last Citizens Academy, which had its graduation before Thanksgiving in November of 2018. And there were comments made during our last session of that Citizens Academy that went ahead, and although appreciating the description of actions that would be taken by the police department, by the fire department, by the public works department, there was a desire to see it more formalized. And to that end, Gary Davis has picked up the ball and brought entities together to go ahead and develop a more detailed set of actions. And so, Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, and Council. I have some graphics up here. Just wanted to show you the map that was in your packet that shows some potential sites. There we go. I want to emphasize the word "potential" here. We're in the very early stages of this. We've just identified some potential points. Our next step is to move forward with coordination with emergency responders and prioritize which of these routes should go forward as available, both physically and legally, for access during an emergency situation. And as the manager said, what's being considered here is to add to our powers and duties of the mayor when declaring an emergency, be able to open to public access any public open spaces or easements, and authorizing opening of gates and breaches of fences on private property for public evacuation purposes. That's what we have to say. We'd be able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, council?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
You know, I appreciate that we did all this and moving forward, having an emergency plan, but just something I want to say for all of us as a community, that in an emergency, we all need to also be aware that we are responsible also for our own selves, and be prepared for things that could happen, because, you know, we don't always have enough police, fire, and everything to get to where they need to go. So as a community, know your neighbors, be neighbor-friendly, and have an idea and a plan in case something does happen, that you can gather yourselves together and help each other until other resources are available. We all do the best we can, and we'll continue to do that, but we all need to help each other, work together, and have a plan that will also protect ourselves.
Sir, it looks like, for the most part, Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Smith from Yavapai County, do they have a copy of this as well, or have they had their input on this? this?
We've been coordinating with, with the emergency services providers there, with, with the public works department, with the manager there. So the county's involved in this, yes?
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
As a resident of Superstition Hills, on behalf of all the neighbors in there, we, we also have some high interest in how we would get in and out. And so, on behalf of Superstition Hills and all of the citizens affected, thank you for the work you're doing. And when you meet with the county supervisors, would you pass on our appreciation?
I will, thank you.
I got a quick question. Have you also coordinated with the fire department?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we will be, as we prioritize these, these routes.
I, I know at the last meeting that I attended of the governing board for the fire department, I let them know that this is coming, you know, to have a heads up, and, you know, Scott Freydeck says, you know, he's aware of it, so that's it.
Yes, in fact, he's written a letter that's in your packet.
Yeah, okay.
I think we need to focus on what we're actually looking at tonight, which is simply to give the mayor the authority to declare the emergency. We're not looking at what actions happen after that. We're simply giving the mayor written authority to do, to call the emergency. That's all. That's all we're looking at tonight.
Anything else? Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
With a motion, can I have a second?
Motion to read ordinance 859 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Clerk, will please call the vote?
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Will you be staying up here, sir? All right, item B, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign resolution number 2083, approving FDP...
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
We need to go ahead and have that first reading.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, go ahead and read the first reading.
Ordinance number 859, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Section 2-02-040, powers and duties of the mayor in Article 2-02, mayor in Chapter 2, mayor and council of the town code, to clarify that in declaring local emergencies, the mayor may open public open spaces or easements and authorize opening of gates and breaching of fences on private property for public evacuation purpose, providing that all other sections of the town code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, item B, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign resolution number 2083, approving FDP 18-018, and to sign any agreement under proposition 207, Crown Point Lofts.
Thank you, Mayor. Location of the property is between Market and Crown Point, on the hill just above State Route 89, off of Sundog Ranch Road, in between the Kia dealership and the Comfort Suites. This is a request for a major modification of a 2016 FDP for development of an apartment complex with 96 units. Originally, the 2016 FDP showed 96 units arranged in eight buildings or clusters. The applicant has now submitted a modified final development plan showing 96 units, the same number, only in five clusters, with revised access and parking configuration to make the project more buildable. The applicant is here to answer any questions. I can answer questions as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. What's his name? Will he be coming up? Come on down, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The description that you had is accurate. We had been in front of this council before to receive approval of our first site plan. When we went to develop our construction drawings, we discovered that that wasn't going to work. So, as a result, you have the modified site plan in front of you today, which, with the help of your staff, we've been able to develop a site that is much more efficient and will, instead of being an eyesore, actually be a very positive view from the road. I think it's a lot better than an eight-foot retaining wall on Crown Point Drive, so happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel?
I don't have any question, Charlie, but I just want to thank you. The fact that you would go back to the drawing board is commendable, and that's not lost on us, and we really want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Sir, how does this work into your timeframe? What, in your, obviously, your timeframe, I'm sure, is fluid, but what do you expect?
Yep, so 2019 is a big year for this project. We are hopeful that we'll have the CDs, the construction drawings underway here shortly, now that we've got a new site plan that is actually buildable. And if all goes well, then we'll be breaking ground sometime this year.
And how long's your build-out?
You're looking at nine to 12 months.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly.
Anyone else? With that, can I get a, can I get a motion?
Thank you.
Motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number 2083, approving FDP 18-0, 18, and to sign any agreement under proposition 207.
I'll second that, Mayor.
And that's by electronic vote.
With a motion and a second, clerk, please call the vote.
Passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Item C, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign resolution number 2084, approving FDP 19-002, and to sign any agreement under proposition 207, Ocean Blue Car Wash. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. This property is located directly north of the existing Maverick Store, near the northwest corner of Lake Shore and Glassford Hill Road. There was previously a final development plan that dealt with a larger area, which includes the subject property. That final development plan laid out private driveways within that area, and the car wash location is noted in yellow here. For the purposes of access to this particular use, access will not be off of Glassford Hill Road, but instead off of private roads within the development. For the purposes of this project, road would be placed behind the Maverick and, and exit out to Glassford Hill Road, and there would be three access points into the property, two off of that, that road, and one directly from the Maverick. This is a blow-up of the project itself, the car wash facility, and again, showing the three access points into that property, but no access directly onto Glassford Hill Road. The applicant was not able to be here tonight, I don't believe, but I'll be able to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, council?
Just wanted, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this in, because I think we need this as well.
With no questions, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor and/or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number 2084, approving FDP 19-002, and to sign any agreement under proposition 207.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
With a motion and a second, clerk, please call the vote.
Passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item D, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign resolution number 2085, approving FDP 19-003, and to sign any agreement under proposition 207, Win Song Senior amended. Mr. Parker, I thought we were going to get away tonight without seeing you.
I wouldn't let Gary have all the fun, Mr. Mayor, council.
Fair enough.
You approved this by resolution in 2018. It's an assisted living facility. In response to the market that they've seen, they've elected to expand the building. And you're familiar with this location, north of Samaritan Village, and there's a big pile of dirt that they're whittling on. They're adding an additional, approximately 2,017 square feet, to the building to accommodate an additional 20-some beds to meet market demand. The staff doesn't have the administrative authority to expand a building footprint. We do have a minor amendment process that we routinely use, but we can't expand a use. That's the reason why we're here today, asking for your approval of an amended final development plan for the project. This has been posted and advertised. We've received no objection to the application.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
Originally, there, one of the components was going to be a memory care, which we so badly need. Is that still part of the component?
That is still planned, and I think the additional beds are going to be devoted to memory care.
I'm, I'm so relieved to hear that, because we are so needing that in our community.
Well, and we've got a plaque put up, we're going to be putting it up over Larry's bed when he's ready to move in. And I'll be doing that one personally.
Sir, with the added beds, what's the total count?
Total counts of beds will go to 121 beds.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, if no other discussion.
With a motion, do we have a second?
Let me read the motion, please.
Thank you.
Motion to authorize the mayor, in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number 2085, approving FDP 19-003, and to sign any agreement under Prop. 207 by electronic vote.
Now, can we have a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item 12, Comments from the Public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member of, member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. With that being said, who would like to start? Ladies first, go ahead, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Ginger Royalty. I live on Dry Creek Road in Prescott Valley on Pronghorn Ranch. I realize there will be public hearing about the evacuation study as further work is needed, but I wanted to provide you with some food for thought before that hearing. First, I urge council members to visit all of the places where you will authorize the mayor to permit opening of gates and breaching of fences. Please do this before you take a final vote. As you've heard before, more than 1,000 of us who live in Pronghorn Ranch have extremely limited options for entering or leaving our neighborhood. These are our two options. One is by taking Antelope Meadows Drive to a point where you turn onto Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, and then reach Viewpoint Drive. The second is to again take Antelope Meadows Drive past our clubhouse and down to Coyote Springs Road. Our family, like so many others, must travel more than a mile to reach those exit points. Others who live in the rural area to the north of us must drive many more miles to reach either Pronghorn Ranch Road or Coyote Springs. This is why opening gates or breaching fences is being considered. Doing that would give us more possible escape routes and hopefully reduce the inevitable jammed-up traffic. But is this truly the best idea? No one wants people dying in cars as what happened when people were trying to flee at Paradise, California. Sorry, I'm nervous. These routes lead to dirt roads at best or rugged open fields at worst. None of us, not all of us, have high clearance all train vehicles. Should someone in the small car get stuck, what happens to those trying to escape behind them? Of course, town emergency personnel will try to help, but will there be sufficient personnel to cover these emergency exits of our neighborhoods? These are the types of questions that need to be answered. This is why I ask that you go see these projected routes for yourselves. At the very least, prioritize the best escape routes as if you lived in one of these neighborhoods. Also, please commit the town to informing each household where it should exit, given this worst-case scenario, as soon as these routes are decided upon. All of us must know exactly where we need to go in an emergency, minimizing confusion at a time when confusion could cost lives. Some may scoff that this will never happen, but there is no question that the number of Western wildfires is increasing. We must be prepared as a community. The Viewpoint Fire was a warning to us all. I also urge the council to never seriously consider adding multifamily housing along Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. Single-family housing, as envisioned in the general plan, won't add so many new residents per acre, but multifamily housing would virtually shut down one of the only two major paved evacuation routes we have. Please take this seriously as our elected representatives. You are equally responsible for our safety. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. Welcome.
Hello, Glenn Brower, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. I don't know, did you receive my last email? Okay. Let me just, for the, for the record, explain what on ordinance, the conditions on ordinance 856. Thanks to many residents who spoke up about the conditions such as the EM evacuation study and the construction traffic routing for the proposed development of Antelope Park Plats, let me reiterate for the residents affected by this development. I have been an investor in the real estate sector for many years and have seen the ups and downs in this business. That being said, situation back in 2008, the real estate bubble burst, Parkview Avenue Drive connection to Viewpoint Drive was never, was not completed, and to this date is not completed. All because Prescott Valley Community Development Department and the town council did not require the developer, Viewpoint LLC, to complete all the off-site infrastructures, roads, et cetera. First, before any building permits were issued, this should be a lesson learned. The question I have is, will any member of the town council speak up for the residents before the second reading of the ordinance of number 856 and make a motion to add a condition to the ordinance number 856 not to allow any building permits to be issued until all off-site improvements are completed in Phase 1 of the construction sequence? Pronghorn Ranch Park improvements. You, the town council, have the final say, not any other employee of the town of Prescott Valley. It's obvious that you went ahead and approved the second reading without this condition. I'd like the permission to ask the legal, the chair, to ask the legal a question, please.
No, sir, you have three minutes left.
Then I will ask the question. Now that you did voted, the question is basically, the second reading has been approved. In the future, can any conditions be added to the ordinance?
Sir, we usually don't go back and forth in questions and answers.
Well, obviously, you weren't listening at the meeting that the legal said that that's the council's priority if they want to ask questions and reply to questions in the five-minute interval.
Yes, sir. We won't be responding to questions tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so you're, you're not abiding by the citizens' request. Is that understandable? Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. Thank you for your time, sir.
My name is Dave Wallace, and I'm a resident of Prescott Valley. In a council meeting on January 10th, 2019, the mayor requested the town manager investigate claims made by Mr. Rob Essen of improprieties and/or mismanagement by staff related to a process involved in Ordinance 856 zoning change in Antelope Park. Although the minutes failed to mention this, the video clearly shows the mayor requesting a report by the town manager on the investigation by the next work-study group. We are now five weeks out from that request, and the public has yet to hear from council on the results of that investigation. We've requested that the investigation be conducted by an independent party. We maintain that the town manager, who admitted to us that he is responsible for the tone of ethics for the town, would inappropriately be investigating himself. We hope the council has not instructed staff outside of public disclosure to ignore this investigation. In addition, the council should be reminded that the public has strong feelings when requests of elected officials are ignored by staff. You can place this item on the next town council agenda meeting, asking to hear the results of the investigation or to instruct staff to hire an outside investigator. Anything less than this would suggest that a thorough and fair process on Ordinance 856 is not within the council's control. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on down. Welcome.
I'm Paula Deal. I'm a resident of Quailwood, and I'm also heavily volunteer, I volunteer for Red Cross, CERT, and with the Fire Department when I was in California. Moving here, some of those opportunities are much harder to do because they are not equipped to handle Red Cross, which doesn't have a lot of sources out here, and they don't have CERT out here so that homeowners understand preparation and understanding evacuation processes that take place. Since I was a duty officer for the Red Cross in handling these evacuation procedures when it comes to fires, floods, and issues, I know how hard it's going to be for Quailwood residents to leave the area based on the design of Quailwood and Bradshaw Mountain Road being the main access out of that community. The emergency evacuation going up into Bradshaw Mountain Dead End and into the grassland is not a logical exit, because when it comes down to a fire situation, that will not be an exit opportunity. The way the winds blow, from what I have been monitoring, is they're coming southwest, which means they're going to be pushing down Bradshaw Mountain Road, and people utilizing that exit route is not going to be heavily used. And if you've ever driven out there, it's extremely, you need a high-end truck or high-end SUV to even get out of that area. So the number of people who could evacuate is very minimal at best. Now, we run into the problem of the exit out of Bradshaw onto 69 and the application to change the zoning from a single resident of 40 homes to an apartment complex of 288, giving us in the area of 400 to 500 cars at the exit of Bradshaw Mountain on 69. There is no evacuation route designed for this apartment complex to even leave except onto Bradshaw Mountain. The whole evacuation process needs to be looked at because you're putting a lot of people at risk trying to leave the area when there isn't easily a way to exit out of Bradshaw Mountain. So having been involved in the evacuation processes, I know, as a volunteer for the Police Department and working with evacuations in California, I know what it takes to leave a cove area similar to what Quailwood looks like to get people out. It is not an easy scenario to handle. So I just want people to understand that process.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that being said, we move to Number 13. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll be glad to second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Everyone, have a great night.